All right. Congratulations to everybody that was elected. Looking forward to working with all of you. The next item on our agenda is going to be the selection and appointment by the Board of Presteze of the Village President Pro Tem. So. I am looking for. Somebody to make a recommendation and or a motion. To appoint the president for ten.
I will make a motion to appoint. Trustee.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. To appoint trustee of begone to the office of president for ten. Any questions? All right, then I will call the role. All those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. So next we have, if you take a look at your agenda, we have the appointment of the village officers. As presented. Again, just. Again, looking for a motion to appoint.
I'll make a motion to.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Are we appointing the whole slate? Yeah.
We have.
Everyone still good with that motion? Okay, I'll call all those in favor. I I opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we have the appointment of village trustees, citizens, and other appointees to various sports committees and commissions as recommended by. The president.
You have to have a motion now then too.
I do. All right, I have a motion. Oh, it was second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Is does this include the concurrence of the chairs of each committee? Cause that's your.
Yeah, well, I'm looking to appoint it as presented, so each chairperson would be. Listed on this as well under their various committees. Welcome to this. I don't think so.
What are you looking at me for?
Are you looking for? All right, we do have a motion in the second. Correct? All right. Call a question. All those in favor. I opposed? Motion carries unanimously again. All right, so we are in order to adjourn this meeting and move directly to the village board meeting. There are no further questions. All right, I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Seven forty, not too shabby. All right. Simple, pretty strict and simple. All right, it is seven forty, but we'll call the village board meeting to order. Don't know if we're gonna, are we gonna do the pledge of allegiance again? Can we? Or can we? Never hurts. Let's do it again. For those who missed.
It'd be good. There you go. All right, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And as good republic for which it stands.
All right, welcome again. All right, I will ask your clerk to please call the role.
So you can just answer president or here, however you want. Trustee Pappy. Yep. Thank you. Trustee Haas. Trustee Abeglin. President Gerke.
Here.
Trustee Dorbert.
Here.
Trustee Bartsch here. Trustee Miley.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, having a quorum, we will move on with the consent agenda. First order, actually, the consent agenda as presented.
That's probably.
And there is, there is also an additional list of. So. Looking for a move trying to approve that consent agenda. So moved. All right, I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? For the discussion? All right, I'll call the role. All those in favor? I opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Again, public comments. If we have any public comments, they are limited to five minutes per person. Hearing none, we will move on to the report on operations of the village. The first one is the village president. I have nothing other than to say thank you to everybody who has helped support me and get to this point. And I look forward to working with all of you guys to move the board forward, however we decide to go and learn as much as we possibly can together and figure as many things out as we need to. It'll be a bit of a challenge, but I look for the support from all of you. I'm looking forward to serving with you. Likewise. All right. All right, report from the village administrator.
Hello, I'm a comment for the work with the new president and trust needs having both their live board and making spell. I'm really excited. On that note, our election went well. Our expanded plan, I've tried to prepare the smooth election process. It's very, very busy. We turn out. It's always great to see. I'm trying to emphasize a lot of time giving them a bad thing or internal giving and reporting processes. I do want to give a quick shout out to you here. I appreciate you really just put in the time and dedication. That that we use here. Good example of this is we've done some recent efforts to do training and workforce coming here. She's been very open minded and able to modify the air of us seats moving forward. And as a result, I truly believe that they're more accurate. Keeping forward should be great for everybody. So thank you. She won her and tied. I reported our last meeting. They just sold one hundred thousand dollars, a grand dollars on the count of the joint that the KLS permanent program. That's very exciting because we did that launch. You're now actively hiring for best. So please spread the word. If you don't even have a lot of absolutely onboard events. Marketing officer, you need to then increase in hours. You can pick retiring from full watching. Please officer, he's ready to be more time there too. And of course, we want to give a shout out to the O G O pay center helping with fundraising efforts for our different. Also receive a recent donation for Florida State Bank for that. Speaking of donations, we keep getting donations and restrictions for kids month run. Started out with an idea just a couple of months ago and it. Ran it up really fast and I'm really excited to see how you're saying everything in your name. Look forward to working with company heads. You're appearing for a director. We put the group to see if this first event is successful for me. Do you got any crews? Continue to work on spring cleaning, working up cars, making there are utilities and there are. Very proud of it. Excited to see that launch as well. Finally, we have meetings. We have screen in here under these ten items. Our goal is really right now getting the C S M. That the project accomplished at the beginning of this whole process, he did. So now we're playing catch up. Just so maybe so our members understand, we have, you know, they follow in, we have sold four courses of that way. I do dollars for actually ready to get put the ground running. But without it, you actually get to see a certain section off, they can't claim ownership over those courses. So our end here is a nine X C S M itself, pipe mission, and you guys were football and then truly launch up there. I'm a man. Just look forward to learning on what you guys and go on with the new ones. Thanks so much. I was finalized in our monthly report that I have in front of you guys. Nothing too exciting, anything else. You're probably seeing more things next month with us and I work with this past month. You see a lot more of our dollars properly allocated into funds that we move. So for example, taxes. See January report for seventy-four, we've received January's tax. So the agents are two biggest warrants allocated to that part. So next month, we should see more accurate selling of those values. I'm just looking for here. Permanent fund and we see that change to that number K that I talked about, the CD raise something outside. And it's also getting expensive. So overall, I should be.
Are we going to be carving off a piece of the remaining airport funds to buttress the fire department expenses? As the county wanted us to think about.
Yeah, we raised our power. If we do that, I guess we're leaving all that expense needed. So. Best case scenario, we can fund it with the dollars of the coming season. If we hit that wall or we can't fund it anymore, then yes.
All right, any more questions of the administrator? Move on to the village marshal's report.
You have the report. If you have any questions regarding that, if there are any.
You guys ordered.
I was gonna get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, we did. I I'll go with my good later spiel here. And this really Eric Lee took this bull by the horns and all I did, my DM had said, hey, I want to do this to save. Go ahead. So, but it's been extremely successful. The alliance here for only one, all right. Bruce Smith was raising money, hundred bucks. Guy from Hill donated money, Port State Bank donated money. The Legion is in the process of donating money. Eric is there to help. We will first, we order two of the units, one for each volunteer. They come with enough supplies basically to do three use it twice. There's two pads, two type of pad in there. So we're gonna take the rest of the money and attempt to spend all the money on supplies and the slice don't go back. So we can, we can use the money for what was basically then for purchase of supplies, have supplies, and then we can buy whatever we place with the parts and who plays with the supplies. And it was usually so, it's pretty successful, a nice upgrade for the marshal's office. And all in all, it's a very, very remarkable. Bruce's fundraiser, folks in the community came out and bought food, gave money and spent their time. Just a huge. Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
It was absolutely terrible day. It was young game, old, raining, but people here in the village really turned out and supported that effort.
Thank you very much, Chris.
So once we get goes in, I imagine we do on slide pattern and.
When, when are you thinking about putting up those speed signs?
Just I'm talking to this young fellow behind me here. Eric will bring it next week and we'll get those up and that will be intended to do that as soon.
Yep.
So again, we just wanted to wait until the snow would have gone and we go want to take them down. I would imagine. October, November, this coming fall, we will do the damage.
We are planning on doing that fundraiser every year for just the marshal's department. So. I just wanted to keep that in your back as well. So. But it will go on for a period of fun and. We'll get there. I'm sure we can find a good task. There are two new members. We have purchased speed signs.
So battery, I'm sorry, battery powered speed signs for Fidoni Avenue and South Mall Street. And our intention is to place those so eastbound and westbound and northbound and southbound. That's lashes. We use those to sense before a lot. And we have one here in the village already that's a solar collar, one that we moved around. We're doing marketing. We don't have one. But these two happens that they do tend to slow most people down. Not everybody, but most of you. So that's a good thing. And we purchased those last year. That's been on our development agenda because our experience in Oregon is when the snow flow is high and it takes long. We then, these are randomly similar boxes that we would put on in the spring or in back in the fall. Now we do intention for you.
I know Eric wouldn't damage them on purpose.
No, no.
All right, any more questions for the marshal? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Fire deed is report.
Yeah, my monthly review for our training stuff that we've done month of March, so all volumes. Sierra call volume, they're trending, we're trending up on annuals all overall about four for the year. Rescue call in the village here with plus three and air call plus three as well for the year. So that's all lines. Applications. I've got four applicants now for a paramedic position. Two of them actually have a paramedic license and two do not. So I'd like to see. I'll talk with Chris on how we want to work this out. You know, I have a preliminary interview with them and then we'll bring them in front of their stuff and. And we better all see what we got.
That's redundant anyhow.
All right, thank you. Anything, any questions?
I had, do you want to make an adjustment in the members? Officially appointed to the E M S train committee? Right now, it's myself and Josh. Would you like to grab my spot on it or?
Well, why don't we, we can discuss that and figure out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that meeting might involve. I think it involves a bit too. You want to go down a player though now that we're. Right.
You're good. All right. Thank you. All right, public works. Waste water treatment plant operator.
My report is in your package. Building questions.
Questions on the D P W head? Anything you want to point out in particular? No, no. All right. Thank you so much. Yeah, there you go. Village clerk.
I have nothing to add except to, oh, I do. I wanted to officially thank our excellent election staff. They were wonderful through the entire spring election season. It was great to get to know them. And for all of us to improve our skill sets together. And then also, I didn't mention in my report that we sent out our first newsletter. To all of the village residents, and we've had a great response with that. We've had a lot of people sign up for our e-blasts through the website, and I started sending those out in the last week or so. So if you guys haven't signed up for it, maybe you should think about it because there's some cool stuff going out. I think that's it.
I know I had asked you if you knew how many people signed up, but I know you were working on that.
So it's kind of hard to tell because the way they break it down is they break down who has signed up for each individual slice. So there's. Emails in more than one spot. So Civic Plus will have to get us an number and get back to us. And I was also going to ask them how many hits we've been getting.
Yeah.
So we can track usage too.
That's good. I did sign up.
Thank you. Oh, I'm glad. Fairness about a hundred. Those hits are going to be mine. Also glad about that. That's wonderful.
Very good. All right. Anything else? Any questions? Here, none of the treasurer.
I think that's where we're at. Chris had a super busy this week. We would be happy with. Great for, I think, both of us, but maybe for sure. I've learned a lot in the last month. Still catching up, still finding. Stuff. But it's. That makes me better than good. I'm checking the things off the list. Something that I didn't check up, which is. I mean, I know that everybody on board in the fall, the great stuff we're doing in the state. Awesome. So that's huge. Income continuation insurance, life insurance, deferred home. Health insurance. W R S, the whole. Which we're quite related behind this thing.
Understand. Aside that, like, you know, how, like, we just remember the next government, right? You wouldn't believe in not having this state government. They just dropped the rule aside. We're always better at completing that. So.
It feels like there was a lot of work, but that was different. Today, with the different companies, make sure that I get everyone's money in the right areas properly and. That was not necessarily as important as you.
Workhouse, workhorse training was good.
Workhorse training was good. It was a lot. I hope I remember what I learned, but I have good contact direct now rather than just continually I'm all listening. So I will always remember the same person. So, which is.
So.
It's been, it's positive.
Positively exhausting is interesting. Well, thank you for all the work. I think I speak on behalf of everybody. We know you're doing a great job and we really appreciate it. All right, the district two supervisor is not present tonight, so we will look for his report, possibly at the next board meeting. Maybe we'll see if he wants to report there. All right, we will move on to items for discussion and or action. I am looking for a motion. To approve. Peggy.
Behead it.
Deck, see? Water bill concessionary request. So we can discuss it.
I'll move to.
All right.
A second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. So. Oh, do you want to? And also, you want to?
So evidently, the lakeheads were out of town. Mom, they were gone. They had a paint first. Three centers. So all the water went through the meter as it should have. However, it's a macro down the sewer because it was first in the yard. So she is simply requesting a concession on the sewer side of her bill. So what I did is I took the last four quarters. Got an average of what the sewer bill was normal and. Hang on, what the difference with was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Difference between what her bill was and what the bill would have been that she.
So in reference to the past, I want to say it was twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we had something similar happen.
No, I don't want that here.
Was it twenty twenty-two?
With a sword.
Uh, yeah, we. Oh, no, I was.
It was a few years ago.
Yeah. I agree. There was a high meter reading and it turned out that somebody had. A water softener and they couldn't account for where it went. The water went through the meter into the softener and then disappeared. This is a little bit different because we know that this didn't go down the sewer. So.
Yes, see, that's a lot of big adjustments to the sewers side of their way. Not allowing to make them.
That was the one question I had.
I, I, I checked with Dan and Don and then I confirmed it with my coworkers. Just to make sure.
He's being a hundred seventy-five less.
Well, she asked a little bit more, but I had more because pretty of her water than what she had. So when I calculate.
So basically, we'll, there'll be a one hundred and seventy-five dollar and seventy-nine cent reduction in sewer income we would have gotten from this meter.
So you have a motion.
I do have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, many members? All right, if not, then I will, all the votes, all those in favor. I opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three F to authorize. Daniel Gerke and for Steph Jenkins to co-sign village checks on documents as the president and administrator. So moved. Second. All right, I have a motion and a second discussion.
Do you order a stamp yet?
All right, any more discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? I opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next we have a motion to adopt Wisconsin administrative code S P S three twenty-seven.
I will move to approve adoption.
I'll say that.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion.
Just you, any questions?
So I can give just a little bit of background on, on this request. So. The state has the authority to. To conduct residential and commercial plan review and inspection, and they delegate that authority back to municipalities at their request. And the village has requested it, and so we do our own inspections. And we received a postpartum mail a few weeks ago that said our inspection, one of our inspection delegations was going to expire. So we took care of that, but there, we took the opportunity to make sure all of our inspection delegations were up to date, and they were not. So we sat down with the building inspectors. We got all the applications filled out. We compiled all the documents and we set everything into D S P S. And everything is buttoned up except for this one little piece of the puzzle. And if we, if the village wants to retain their U D C residential inspection delegation. The state requires that we adopt S B S three twenty-seven into our ordinances. And it's like thirty pages long. It's about camping units. And so, you know. That's the shield.
That's the shield.
Does that have to do with inspecting trailers?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's the state's expectation. It's the equivalent of the U D C just for camping units and trailers.
Okay. Not that we're gonna.
Yeah.
Zone any to.
Yeah.
They need it.
All right, thank you for that summary. Any other questions? All right, if not, then I will call the vote. All those in favor? I opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? Doesn't look like it.
I have, I have a four question. I was contacted by Shinos. In twenty twenty-three, they are highlighting these elements for governments. And wanted to know if we wanted to do, you know, like the party death or whatever. Party death was way too expensive for our. Going kind of back and forth with her. But they offered this tickets to anybody that we said for twelve dollars a seat. That's something you guys would be interested in, the more you. So as we stand out. An only one number for.
More about team building. I just don't know if that's the. They're up to go with. Yeah, yeah, there's all in one. You need a.
I just, I, I don't want to put our work into it. No, kind of give a poll for.
I mean, there are costs in the village or.
It would be, I don't think it would have to cost too, you know, way either. The village to support twelve dollar ticket for everybody, but.
For the whole village, just pay for it.
I mean. Think about it.
Yeah.
Don't we, you know, let me know. So I can. Get this lady off my back door and she was engaged.
He's a good salesman, is what you're saying. Yes.
Now, if there was a brewery game.
She could find a twelve dollar ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus twelve dollars for beer.
Yeah.
All right. Any other correspondence, items for future consideration by the village board? I'll just throw off, but there's an Arbor Day, um, celebration that's going on at twelve thirty next Thursday, for anybody that wants to attend, it's right here, is it right here?
Yeah, I think it's in the parking lot, right, Melissa?
Yeah.
Plant the trees here.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent, I'll be there, no? No, twelve thirty P M, anybody wants to come, I'll be there. We should make it easy to back over sometime. All right, we, uh, looks like we're.
Then I talked about our, we're entering a game for the planning. Um, so we're open, and maybe two test speeds plus the prevent, to help run this larger thing we make, so if you think we're a big part of that, please.
Should be fun timing.
Do you have more information on what it entails?
All right. All right, it sounds like we have three motions to adjourn, so I don't know.
I'll have a second.
All right, Donald second, somebody else.
I didn't get the motion.
Uh.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay.
There it is.
Bruce, second, done.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Robert.
Uh, I have no, I have a sick kid at home, again, kids in daycare.
Yes, and you want to wait on.
Yeah. I don't know, there's rule on it.
No, yeah, all right, Brian, I was gonna get a good picture. So that's more pictures. Yeah, I guess we'll wait till next time, right?
So, you would, you wanna?
I mean. Also. Thank you.
I think you might have to.
Congratulations. Just get one question, but still, looking forward to myself. I am, I want to. It's just, okay, as I see, uh. My name's not Curtis. A big bull. It's not your name? I was gonna say. So. We come down the bar. So we're really looking at declining like a twenty. To come together and redefine.